For the City Council Public Financing Authority. Well, now moving on to study session, staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, we do. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and City Council members. This evening, we'll be presenting the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget review. So we'll be going over the current year's general fund budget update, the proposed general fund budget overview, as well as the proposed 2324 capital improvement budget review, key budget considerations for fiscal year 2324, and then next steps. So just to provide a brief economic overview. So currently, economic trends indicate a continued economic recovery from the financial impacts of COVID-19. However, the collapse of certain banks, including Silicon Valley banks, are likely to restrict the availability of credit. And economists largely expect some form of recession by the end of 2023. So real GDP did increase in Q3 2022 and declined slightly in Q4 2022, and is further expected to slow in Q1 23 down to 1.1%. Consumer spending did accelerate during the fourth quarter, largely due to holiday spending. However, it was offset by weaknesses in housing, a decline in inventories, and then contractions in business equipment spending. Moving forward, we are anticipating a slowdown in consumer spending that will impact our sales tax revenues. The Federal Reserve also increased rates for the 10th time in just over one year. And so the rate is currently between 5 to 5 and 1/4%. Chairman Powell has softened language to potentially allow for a pause in rate hikes. However, the yield curve does remain significantly inverted. So as we emerge from the pandemic, the city is monitoring recent developments in the economy, such as the Russia-Ukraine crisis, inflation and its related impact on prices, supply chain challenges, rising interest rates, as well as labor shortages. Currently, the city is still projecting a $3.8 million surplus for the current fiscal year. However, this number is subject to change. So then, moving on to the fiscal year 2324 general fund proposed budget review. We are pleased to present a structurally balanced budget with a projected $3.6 million surplus. So just looking at the breakdown, we do have recurring revenues of $278 million, one-time revenues of $2.27 million, and that is related to the general funds portion of the Emerald Cove settlement, as well as the planned use of reserves of $8.8 million, which is related to the $4.9 million reserve from AES that will be used for capital projects in the southeast area, as well as a $3.9 million use of equipment reserves. So we have total sources of funds of $289 million. And then we have total expenditures of almost $286 million, which is broken down into $182 million personnel, $55 million in operating costs, and then $48.6 million in non-operating costs. And those costs include items such as debt service, capital expenditures, and then transfers to other funds. So with this upcoming year, we do also maintain our commitment to infrastructure investments. And then so we do have general fund transfers, which have increased by 11% to $15 million. And then we also have a total CIP budget of $41.2 million, which did decrease slightly from the prior year due to the use of HB recovery monies, as well as a one-time $6.6 million grant for Hyal pump station in the current fiscal year. So this is the breakdown of the recurring revenues for fiscal year 2324. So then you can see that our largest revenue source is property tax, followed by sales tax, franchise fees, TOT, and UUT. And so our recurring revenues are anticipated to increase by an additional $4.8 million from the current fiscal year. And then we'll go over some of those large variances in the following slide. So some of the large major revenue variances include an increase in property tax of 4.3%. And that's largely due to higher assessed valuations due to property sales, as well as CPI. And then a slight decrease in transient occupancy tax as tourism shifts more to global travel. So that's something that we are anticipating as well. We are also looking at an increase in the use of money in property of $2.1 million additional. And so that's related to increased parking, as well as lease and concession revenues. And then we also have a decrease in our non-operating revenue. And so that is largely due to the one-time transfer of American Rescue Plan funds, the amount of $29.6 million, which is partially offset by the $2.3 million settlement that we did receive from the Department of Finance for Emerald Cove. So then next, looking at the general fund proposed revenues, which totaled $285.6 million. We have two charts. So one is by category. So personnel, which is our largest expense, makes up 63.6% of the budget. However, just one thing to note is this number does also include fixed costs related to our pension obligation bonds, as well as our UAL costs to CalPERS. Then we do have operating costs equaling 19.4% of the budget, other debt service costs, as well as transfers to other funds. And then we also have a breakdown by department as well. So, you know, our largest department is police, at 29.6% of the overall general fund budget, and then fire at 29.8%. So then some of the large variances in the upcoming fiscal year's proposed expenditures include a shift in personnel. So that does include increased workers' compensation costs just to accommodate for the rising costs in claims and in our premiums that we've experienced, as well as an increase to the PERS normal cost, and then continuing impacts from prior MOUs that we're currently going through now, as well as the addition of 11 new FTEs, which we'll go over in further detail on following slides. We also have transfers out of $42.7 million, and that did decrease by $12.5 million. And again, that is largely due to the transfer of $18.1 million for authorized HB recovery projects. And again, that was partially offset by the $2.3 million Emerald Cove settlement, which will be transferred to the general liability fund, as well as to our Section 115 trust in a 50-50 split. So as discussed, we do have 11 new general fund positions that we are recommending to add for the upcoming budget. So within the city attorney's office, we are looking at adding one deputy community prosecutor to support the increased caseload, two senior deputy city attorneys, and one senior legal assistant. And then in the city clerks department, we are also looking at adding one municipal records manager to facilitate the centralization of record keeping. In the city managers department, we are also recommending the addition of one graphic designer to assist with citywide public information, as well as a multimedia officer to oversee operations of the city's Cable 3 channel, YouTube channel, and online digital content. For these positions, one thing we do also want to note is these services are currently being contracted out. And so the addition of these positions would be offset by savings on professional services contracts, which were included in the proposed budget. So then next, in the community development department, we are also recommending the addition of two combination inspectors to mitigate the backlog to our residents and to our businesses, and then also to provide more timely inspections. And then also, one plan check engineer, just to meet the increased demand for plan check services. And then to bring the contracted consulting work in-house. So again, with these positions, these are currently being contracted out. And so we did reduce the professional contract services budget accordingly in this department to accommodate the addition of these positions. And then in human resources, we are also recommending the addition of one HR analyst in the risk management division to also support the increased workload, mitigate risk, and also just to take a deeper dive into our workers' comp claims and to see where we can identify areas to reduce costs. So then this next chart provides a historical overview of our full-time equivalents in the general fund. So then, as you can see, our current proposed budget includes a total of 832 positions in the general fund that we are recommending. The reason that some of these are not whole numbers is because we do have positions that are also partially allocated to other funds, such as water and sewer. So just to provide an overview of the general fund long-term financial plan. So this is slightly updated from our mid-year budget update. So previously, we were looking at a 6.8% CalPERS return for this fiscal year. However, the most recent information we've received from our CalPERS actuary is that they are projecting a 5.5% return. So with that, that would create additional impacts onto the city's UAL in out-years. So you can see that reflected in these numbers as well. So with that, you can see that with these increased UAL costs, we would be in a deficit position starting in fiscal year 2526 moving forward, which, you know, would require potentially the use of Section 115 trust monies or, you know, looking at other potential options, such as other revenue raising measures. One thing just to note as well in these numbers is that these revenue amounts do not include the addition of the $2.8 million in proposed parking revenues that are being considered for approval by council this evening. So just to provide a brief pension update. So the CalPERS return in 2021 was 21.3%. And then at that point, you know, we were super funded at almost 103%. And then with the negative 7.5% return we did experience in the prior year, our level did drop to almost 88% funded, which basically brought us to having new UAL of $190 million. So just as kind of a refresher, part of our pension plan, the city did also adopt an unfunded accrued liability pension funding policy, which does mandate that we set aside additional funds just to pay off any new future debt. So within the proposed budget, we are also including a $2.6 million transfer to the Section 115 trust, a portion of which is related to our mandated $1 million transfer, as well as the 50% savings, which is approximately another half a million, and then as well as 50% of our $2.3 million settlement from Emerald Cove. So this does just also kind of provide just an updated projection of how our UAL payments would look in out-years. So as you can see, again, beginning in 2526, we would start looking at potentially drawing on our trust. But again, just one thing to note is that these numbers, as well as our long-term financial plan, do not include the addition of the $2.8 million in parking revenues that are being presented for approval this evening. So one other item that we are recommending to include in the adopted budget, as well as an update to our fund balance policy. So we are looking at, you know, ensuring that we maintain a prudent level of reserves, just kind of based on the revenue impacts that we've described in previous slides. And then also, just the city's desire to maintain our strong bond ratings, just to be able to minimize future borrowing costs when we do look at, you know, potential, you know, new infrastructure projects and the like. So the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, does recommend a minimum of two months of operating expenditures to be set aside in a rainy day reserve. So staff is recommending consolidating certain general fund assignments into the economic uncertainties reserve in order to meet that two-month reserve requirement. And additionally, we're also recommending that a minimum of 25% of any unrestricted one-time revenues would be transferred into the city's Section 115 trusts. And then we are also recommending strengthening our reserve policy to ensure that funds are set aside systematically and then only used when truly necessary. And that would have to be approved by, you know, a sixth, seventh vote of city council. So then additionally, if any economic uncertainties funds were utilized and that level did fall below the two-month reserve requirement, then the chief financial officer would bring forward a proposed plan to city council in order to replenish the funds within three fiscal years at the earliest practical opportunity. So, you know, again, cities with robust fiscal reserve policies are more likely to receive improved bond ratings. This is something that is always seen as a credit policy positive by our rating agencies, such as S&amp;P and Fitch, you know, as well as ongoing review of our fund balance policy. They do want to make sure that we're being proactive and constantly monitoring this to make sure that we are taking, you know, any current financial concerns just into consideration. And so then with that, I will turn the presentation over to Tom Herbell, our city engineer, to discuss the CIP.
Thank you, Sonny. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protem, council, and staff. It's my pleasure tonight to be here to give you the CIP for the next fiscal year, which helps us to achieve our strategic planning goal of enhancing and maintaining our infrastructure. Before I get started, I really want to give a big thank you. It takes a village to make this happen. And a big thank you to all the departments. Everybody's involved in the city in making this happen, not only community services, community development. Finance has a big role. They help us figure out our budgets and help us stay within our budgets. But I also want to give a big thank you to David Fayed, our construction manager. You see all the stuff going on out there in the city. He's managing all that with his staff. And I also want to give a big shout out to Chris right here, sitting next to me, and our administration staff, Sarah White Cotton, as well as Nancy Rodriguez. They help assemble this huge project and work with all the departments to make it happen so we can bring it to you tonight. Before I run into the actual CIP, I just want to give a brief shout out on the accomplishments this year. We will have started or completed 87 of 94 projects to a total of 85 million. Again, all the help that I get from everybody here at the city council who awards all the construction contracts to city management, to everybody. Can't do it without everybody. It's a huge endeavor, and I don't take that lightly. And we're super proud of what we're doing. Now I'll get on to the CIP.
What are the four water projects?
The four water projects are the Waterwell 9 roof redesign, our water main replacement projects that are going on over kind of in the southeast area of downtown, a water production building rehab, as well as well, and number four, facility upgrades. So, I'm sorry, there was a slide that we need to get to. All right, I will just talk about it. So there was a slide here about our total budget. Sonny had mentioned earlier our $41.2 million in the budget. I'm stoked, because three years ago, it was $25 million, which we didn't have much money. And now we're spending a lot more on our infrastructure, and I'm super proud of that. So we have $41.2 million in new appropriations, but we also have $7 million in continuing appropriations. And what those are, are projects, we have multi-year projects. They take sometimes three years to build. We continue that money into the next fiscal year to continue to fund those projects. So that's where the additional $7 million comes from. Also, our funding sources include, one of the big ones is general fund, which is the one everybody competes for. We had $47 million in requests this year. And I'm happy to say we were able to fund $10 million of the $43 million. I wish I had $47 million. I wish I had it all. But budget-wise, we're doing really good with what we got. We also have the enterprise funds. We all know water and sewer funds. We have our special revenue funds, our Mezzuram, our gas tax, Prop 42, our PEG funds, all of the development impact fees that we deal with. They all go into the capital program. And then, of course, you'll see a little bit later, we have grants that we've attained. Sonny mentioned our federal grant for $6.6 million for Hyal pump station. Again, another thing to be proud of. We have more of that to come. Then on to the drainage category. We plan to spend $1.8 million this year. And some of the most notable projects include the fueling station canopies. We propose next year to cover our fueling islands. We have multiple islands throughout the city. We have them at fire stations. We have them at our corporate yard. We have them at our utilities yard. They need to be covered to meet our regional water quality control board permitting. Also, in continuing from last year, we have more storm drain pump station building improvements and four bay improvements. This includes fascia board roofs. It includes doors and louvers, security access, to make sure that we keep those secure. And then the last on that list is the Atlantis Storm Drain Trash Removal Project. That's to help us keep in compliance with our regional water quality control board permit. And basically, what this will do, it will keep everything greater than 5 millimeters from getting to the ocean. So the real benefit for us is tourism and recreation for our residents at the beaches, because it keeps all that trash off the beach. Now on to the facilities category. We propose on spending $4 million. The first one is our ADA improvement program. We always get requests for ADA improvements, whether it's somebody that was recently handicapped or whatever it may be. We get these requests. This will help us keep in compliance with ADA improvements. Also, this year, we're going to be doing design for the Civic Center hot water system. This whole Civic Center was built with copper piping 50 years ago. So it's failing, as well as the pumps. So the design this next year will help us figure out how much money we need to spend in budget for the following fiscal year. Also, in the budget this year is Ocean View Estates roadways and driveways. We actually own a mobile home park at the corner of Golden West and Ellis, right at the northeast corner. It needs a little bit of work with some asphalt and concrete. That's to help out with that. And then we also have a budget for upgrades to the city treasures and city clerk's office remodel. In addition to, we're also going to be embarking upon our community services will be on a library master plan for the Banning Branch. In addition to that, we also have police women's locker room improvements. It's going to be basically gender modifications. It's going to be upgrades to the showers and expansion of their locker facilities. In addition to that, we have the PD Communications Center remodel. That's actually a current, ongoing project. This additional money will help us finish it out next fiscal year. And then last but not least, we have the Central Library lower level restroom. That restroom needs some reconstruction to make it ADA compliant. And that's what that money's going to go for. Then on to the neighborhood category. Our next zone, everybody's heard about our zone maintenance program, is Zone 4. And next year, we're going to be spending $7.4 million. And Zone 4 is bounded by Yorktown to the north, Magnolia to the east, Alabama to the west, and PCH to the south. So now that we've completed our 12 zones, we are doing a wash, rinse, and repeat of the zone program again. And what's great is we've made great headway on the first 12 years. We're hoping that it'll be less headway we'll have to make going forward. But we're starting the 12 zones all over again. Then on to the parks and beaches category. We propose on spending $2.8 million. The first two are playground improvements. This is replacement of equipment, as well as rubberized resurfacing for those two parks. The softball field improvements is at Murdy Park. It's going to be rejuvenation of the grass and some upgrades to the softball field there. I think we are all aware of the Surside Sunset Beach Nourishment Project. This is a collaboration between the US Army Corps of Engineers, Newport Beach, Seal Beach, Sunset Beach, the county, as well as the state. And this will dredge 1.75 million cubic yards from offshore onto the beaches at Sunset, where during the north swells, it replenishes all the way down to Newport Beach. So that's what that money goes towards. And then we also have the Eater Park parking lot resurfacing, self-explanatory. And then the Edison Park reconfiguration. This is design money to figure out what we want to do with Edison Park. Then on to sewer improvements category. We plan on spending $8.3 million. We have sewer lift station improvements. One of the bigger expenses here is actually, we're going to be installing a gravity sewer down at the beach. We have the restrooms between 9th Street and Golden West Street that are on septic tanks. And during the heavy use during the summer, they get full really quick, because people like flushing a lot of things down there that they shouldn't. So we're actually going to be putting in a gravity sewer along the beach path down in that area. We're going to pump it up to PCH where the OCSD trunk line is, and then it'll make it all the way down to their plant down at the Santa Ana River. Then we have our annual sewer lining program, where we line our aged sewer lines. And then we also have the Edinger Sewer Murdy Channel to Beach Boulevard. What that is, we're going to be upsizing the sewer. We have this little thing called In-N-Out that went in on Edinger, and they kind of triggered an upsize in our pipe for future development. So that's what that project is for. It's for upsizing that sewer to accommodate future development.
Tom, can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
All the development on Edinger there had been paying in some sort of developer impact fee, correct?
Correct.
Along the way, so In-N-Out going in, they paid their fee and likely triggered the need for that sewer line to be upgraded?
They did.
Okay. And so was there, do we know if there was enough cost recovery over the course of the last 10, 15 years to accommodate this project?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'll get back to you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
Sure. Then on to one of our biggest categories, which we love, our nice streets. We have our arterial rehabilitation at $5.6 million. And the streets this next year are orange from Golden West to 17th, Magnolia, Indianapolis to Atlanta, Hamilton, Magnolia to Bouchard. And then next to that is the AES complete street improvements. That is really bike lanes on Newland and Magnolia and Bouchard, radar feedback signs, which will also be installed, as well as landscape medians. And then we have the Oakview Streetscape at $1.2 million. We have the Golden West median turf replacement. You'll see a lot of work going out on Golden West right now. We've taken down some large eucalyptus that have been, let's say, uplifting our infrastructure. And we'll be replanting with drought tolerant planting. And the big one is it'll be drought tolerant because we're getting rid of the turf. We also have the Bella Terrapidi Substation Fiber Optic. That'll be installing a fiber optic into our substation, which doesn't exist today. It allows connectivity to City Hall. And then we have a new fire station signal at Murdy. We have our annual bridge preventative maintenance program, which is, we actually have 56 bridges in the city. You don't think of them all as bridges, because they're not like Coronado Bridge. You don't think of them as bridges, but they are. And they need a lot of railing, concrete, walls, things of that, that need just maintenance on them. And that's what that money's for. And then we also have the Edinger and Hyal corridors, traffic and pet safety improvements. And then, again, that's kind of on the low end. It's sidewalk, it's bike lanes, it's pedestrian safety, and things of that nature. Then under the water improvements category for $5 million, we plan on repaving the utility yard parking lot. We have some rehabilitation going on at a water production building. A lot of it is restrooms and things of that nature. We also have onsite gas generation at Wells 5 and 9. We also have West Orange County Water Board. The CP stands for cathodic protection. Cathodic protection is a current Cathodic protection is a current, you put in our metal lines to keep them from corroding. So that project will retrofit one of our main feeds into the city for our import water to keep it from rusting. And then we also have the Heartland Water Main Replacement Project. Every year, we have a couple of water mains on there for replacement, and this is the next fiscal year. And then well 3A treatment system for dissolved manganese. As the groundwater changes in our aquifer, sometimes we pump things and we test our water all the time and go, wow, where did that come from? Things just shift in the groundwater, and all of a sudden, we're getting manganese hits on well 3A. So we needed to put in a treatment system to deal with the manganese in well 3A. And then with that, I'll probably hold off questions to the end, but I also want to give a little plug. Next week, it Tuesday night, Surf City Downtown, we have our national, or yearly Public Works Open House. So we invite everybody to come join us. It's National Public Works Week also. So please come down. We have lots of prizes. Bring your kids, the kids love it. They get to sit in loaders and dozers and all sorts of stuff. We have tons of prizes for the kids. It's always a great turnout. We'd love to see you all there. So with that, we'll turn it back over to Sunny.
Thank you, Tom. And so then, city council direction and feedback is requested on the proposed budget, especially as it relates to the transfer of the $4.9 million from the AES Reserve to Fund 1284 for Southeast area CIP projects, and then the use of the $3.9 million in equipment replacement reserve, the split of the Emerald Cove Settlement Funds, the general fund portion between the Section 115 Trust and General Liability Fund, the addition of 11 full-time equivalents across various departments, and then also a recommended update to the general fund's fund balance policy. And so for next steps, you know, based on council's feedback this evening, staff will make the adjustments to the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget. And then the revised budget will be brought forth to, for foremost, city council consideration and adoption on June 6th. And so then with that, I would like to open it up for any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Just going back to the full-time positions slide. I'll start with the Attorney's Office. Mr. Gates, is there any flexibility in the four that you see that we can potentially push out to maybe next year? I guess, like, what's the highest area of need for you?
Yeah, so it's a good question. These four positions, basically, are estimate, our office's estimate on what it would take really to satisfactorily meet the needs and demands of the office right now. And just for a little bit of context and perspective, and I talked to a couple council members about this before, a lot of the increased workload really is, believe it or not, it's kind of a time delay from COVID. A lot of trials during COVID and shortly thereafter were actually set for 2024. So we're doing a lot of work now to prepare. I'm, you know, swamped with trial prep right now, and there's a number of trials coming up just this year. So that delay, plus, it seems that, you know, demands for legal work is sort of cyclical, but on like a, you know, three to four-year cycle. And it seems like we're getting into that again, so there's just a lot of increased work. So this is our estimate for what it would take. We certainly can try to do more with less if council didn't feel comfortable approving something like this. But because we do have an obligation to do high-quality work, even, you know, ethically, we're compelled to do high-quality work, we really have to put the time in, we can't take shortcuts. So having said that, if we, if the council were to approve fewer positions, and we were to need more assistance and possibly have to tap outside resources, then we would have to come back to council to make up that difference. So it's just a matter of trying to meet the demands, as we are experiencing them now frankly, and anticipate them in the next couple of years.
Okay. And then now in the City Manager Department, can you kind of describe what these two are? And, you know, are they critical for this year, or can one be pushed to the next year?
Councilmember McKeon, big picture, I would say that one of the, one of the main comments that we've been getting, both from the public and others, is our need to communicate more effectively with the public. And as you know, we have two, two and a half kind of staff members, Jen Carey, Julie Toledo, and a halftime Soka. And, and so I would probably ask Jen Carey to weigh in if, to give you more specifics, councilmember, but I think the original plan was to have a larger, a larger number of staff to really have the impact internally and externally, but Jen Carey kind of honed it.
Hi. Hi. Yeah, so obviously, the establishment of the Office of Communications is still a fairly new concept. It's something that really just was created a little over a year ago. So as we've continued to grow that office and really grow the initiatives and the goals that we've set forth for ourselves, we've seen the gaps, and we've seen what's really critically needed. Most of the town halls, most of the community meetings, everything we're really hearing is the lack of communication from the city. So whether that be a lack of digital content, a lack of relevant content, a lack of press releases, stories, things of that nature. And it's really critical, I think, these positions are really going to fill that gap. So whether it be the graphic designer, which a lot of that right now, we're contracting out. So what we've done is reduce the amount of money that we would be paying to contractors, who are currently performing that work, to cover that position. And same with the multimedia officer, that would bring a lot of our digital content in-house and allow us to be more fluid and more responsive than we currently are.
Got it. So then on that, the multimedia officer, so like you guys mentioned before, a lot of these were contracting out, so it's actually, could be a savings by bringing this in-house, especially that position, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. All right.
And if I may add, having overseen a large office communications before, the productivity, you know, no slight on contractors by any means, but having in-house staff can add to the productivity for the personnel worked.
Okay. And then lastly, just on community development, obviously, I get the inspectors. And then on the Plan Check Engineer, in my private sector life, that's always the biggest delay. So, I mean, how much time do you think that'll save by adding one more, in terms of Plan Check Review and streamlining and being more efficient?
It's always a lot more flexible to have somebody sitting in an office that you can just go to when there's a concern with a Plan Check comment and understanding it. So I think it will greatly enhance our customer service. And then just to remind the council that we collect fees for all of our services, so we are paying these costs one way or another. And when we worked with finance on the comparison, we actually think it will be less expensive to have these in-house as opposed to contracting out. And that's looking at the fully burdened rates.
Okay.
And there's the benefit of the customer service.
Right, okay.
And I might also add, Councilmember McKeon, the customer service training we just went through, we will now be doing the process mapping for both on the inspection side, Plan Check side, et cetera. So the efficiencies will grow over time, so.
I have a quick question. For the Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program, are those the bridges that, like Humboldt, Davenport, Trinidad, or which bridges are we referring to?
So Humboldt, Davenport, and Trinidad, well Trinidad is one of them, but Humboldt and Davenport are scheduled for replacement. So this Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program, I'll call it, it's duct tape and lipstick on the bridges that we currently own. So it does not include those, because those are going to be replaced. So these are the bridges that, like, go over our flood control channels, that have railing on them and sidewalks that spall, cars hit them all the time, and we have to repair them. So that's what that money goes for. It's really just simple concrete patching, railing, and some asphalt patching and repair.
And when do you think Humboldt and Davenport would be replaced?
So I want to make sure I don't get the two mixed up, because they're all on different, they're both federally funded. And maybe, Chris?
Humboldt will be by late 2024, early 2025. Construction will be expected to start at Humboldt. Davenport, possibly 2025, 2026. But Humboldt is closer to starting construction sooner than Davenport.
Okay. Thank you.
And then on Davenport, I know we're asking for an advance of funds from the state. Currently, they have us projected out later in the 20s, and we're trying to get that advanced. And given the current financial stability of the state, it sounds like it's not that much of an issue that they'll be able to advance us the money a couple of years earlier than expected.
And when was that open house you mentioned?
Next Tuesday night at Surf City Nights at 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mayor, to start with the meeting. Thank you. I wasn't sure who was calling on folks. I appreciate staff, again, putting together a fantastic budget that I think really starts to meet the needs of the residents. I wanted to, well, Tom's still sitting there. You said on our zone paving that we were going to restart the 12-year cycle. Is that, I believe, last year, we voted to move that down to a nine-year cycle? Are we still going to do it on nine, or have we moved it back to 12?
Councilmember Cal, great question. So due to budgetary constraints, we wound up going back to the 12-zone cycle.
Okay, okay. That's disappointing to hear, but understanding the current situation.
So just to caveat that, we manage the entire city's roadway network based upon our pavement classification index. And if you were to drive through, like, Costa Mesa and a lot of other cities, we're looking pretty good compared to a lot of cities. And if we were to go to a nine-zone system, it doesn't help our PCI that much. It's almost like you're, we're spending money not getting the benefit.
Right. I remember that with six years, to go down to six years, it was the cool, your pavement is, you know, it's marginally more effective, and that kind of large asymptotic curve of trying to fix pavement early and on, so it doesn't cost us a fortune at the end, is always helpful.
Yeah. My analogy is, you have your house painted, right? I'd love to paint my house every three years, but it's not needed, because that would kind of be a waste of money.
Sure.
But we would not get the benefit at six years, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other than black, it'd be black every year.
Black, very black asphalt. And I do recognize that, you know, a lot of folks do say, when are you going to fix our streets? When are you going to fix our streets? But a lot of that is the arterials that they're driving on, and that's a much larger and longer process, a more expensive process to get to. And also, a lot of people complain about Beach Boulevard and Caltrans, which we have zero control over. We can request them. I've been sending emails, and still some.
Falls on deaf ears.
Still some pretty big potholes on Beach Boulevard. Thank you for that. Sunny, on the ULA payments on Slide 14. So our POB payments are steadily decreasing. Our pension obligation bonds are steadily decreasing, and those time out 2040-something?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed on the slide, two slides later, that the Calpers' UAL payment, we go, we basically have a shortfall in 2030. Is there, are we calculating in this the delta decrease? Is that what's in the additional general fund math for the decrease in the POB payments, being able to offset some of this as we move forward?
So the decrease in the general fund payments, for the general fund portion, the pension obligation bond payments, is actually due to the anticipated increase in our employee override tax. So as we receive additional funds from that through property tax, that would decrease the general fund's burden on our pension obligation bonds. Yes, we could potentially use some of that to cover our increased UAL costs as well.
Because our POBs are, we have a flat fixture. We're paying them down a little earlier, but is it really saving us anything by paying them down earlier? Or it's just money that can only be used for one of two things?
Our pension obligation bonds, so we have.
No, the property tax override, that money can only be spent on POBs or like a 1-1-5 trust, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's kind of money moving in either direction, but we don't have, if we don't make our Calpers' payments, bad things happen. If we, if we go back up to the minimum payment that we need on our POB bonds, it doesn't really, does it change much of the math?
So we're not, so these numbers don't anticipate an accelerated repayment of our pension obligation bonds. It just means that as, so our employee override tax would actually increase year over year just due to, you know, just general inflation, right, CPI increases, as well as, and so that money, so as we receive more employee override tax, then there would be less general fund revenues that would need to be used to pay our pension obligation bonds.
Oh, I see. Okay. I understand that. Now that makes sense. Okay. City Clerk, you have an additional person for, in addition to the person from last year, for records management. This is to bring that system fully online?
That's to begin the process, yes. We need somebody with a little bit more experience than me to look at all of our systems, put everything together, and then move forward. Right now, we do, we added a record specialist to get us more in compliance with our CPRA requests. She's doing, she works real closely with the city attorney's office. So that was the first piece of the puzzle. And now we're going to move forward, getting a records manager on board and making some plans.
Wonderful. That's, I think, one of the other kind of, people interact with the city very rarely, and one of them is usually PD, and the other one would be trying to get records out of the city. And I think that that's very important going forward. To the city attorney's office, I think, I echo Mr. McKeon's questions about, can we move some of this around? And Mr. Gates and I did have some, have a conversation about these. And I'd be interested in if council would be potentially contracting out some of those positions, if it is cyclical, that we've got all this demand left over from COVID, that hiring those folks, like, we're going to have to let folks, I don't want to have to let people go. Like, that's not a great thing. I want, if they're going to work, I'd like it to start a career. So I'd like to take it maybe down to two, and then two contracted positions if we need them to get that workload going forward. Obviously, I don't know which ones would make sense, they're easier to contract out. But I think bringing four folks on, and then that load disappears. I mean, it's nearly a million dollars in additional legal costs, which, you know, is non-trivial amounts of money for that. So I'd be interested in going to two plus some contracts, because at least we can get the work done.
Well, I know, for me, I mean, I'm not trying to speak for you, but I feel like we definitely need a prosecutor, right?
Right. So just a little further description on what's proposed, and this may help councilmember Calmick answer his question. So the prosecutor is sort of in a lane of his or her own. And that prosecutor, if council moves forward with this proposal, that prosecutor will work with our current prosecutor and basically work on the increased workload. And in essence, double the amount of prosecution we could do at the local level. That prosecutor can't cross over and do civil or advisory, because prosecutors stay in their lane. And there's an ethical wall between the type of work that they do for the state and for the people of California versus what we do on the civil side, where we actually represent the city of Huntington Beach itself as a client, right? So they're, so they're a little different. So that's, that's a binary issue. You either want more prosecution or you don't. There's no crossover there. On the other positions, the advisory would be another attorney on board that could help, like Mr. Vigliotto with sort of the government law type stuff, legal opinions, research, things of that nature, and advising boards and commissions. And then the litigator would be just another litigator on our current team. And then the senior legal assistant is really support staff. We currently have three. Having a fourth would be a huge help. If there was sort of a different approach to this where we contracted, if we actually brought them in-house on contract, that's something I could see. Maybe the senior legal assistant being one of those positions, we could do that.
Okay.
And then maybe, maybe either the advisory or the litigation attorney. So I think there's something that we could do if we brought them in on contract.
Okay.
If we outsourced, we're looking at, you know, for an attorney, we're looking at, you know, $400, $500 an hour. So there's really zero cost savings there. You can't even imagine possible cost savings there.
Right. I'm just saying that the, you know, the city attorney's office has had 11 FTEs for 20. And so to ramp up for four more for, it's temporary amount of time seems like that we're going to have to lay folks off or decrease that in the future if we, I mean, nobody wants to have excess. And I'm sure you'd find stuff for, you know, folks to do if they were there. But I, you know, again, since we kind of anticipate it being somewhat cyclical, that having two more, having four more FTEs on the budget would be tough. I mean, again, like, you know, it's, it's free, but we got to pay for it. You know, it's another million dollars now for the additional workload that the city's maintained. So that would be my recommendation. I don't know if the council is, if that's interested, the council's interested in that.
Yeah, but just, just since it's a budget discussion, you still need the money for the contractors, so.
Right.
So.
I want to apologize to my colleagues for being late and coming late in this discussion. I, I mean, we're not making any commitments, right, tonight? We're just, you know, going through the budget, and, because there's still a lot of questions I've asked. I've asked our CFO to come back to me with. So at least from my perspective, this is an opening salvo, and we're, we're not making commitments, right?
I think we're given staff direction to bring the budget back at the next meeting, so it's, we're kind of getting that, we're getting to that, that point.
Okay, because I'm still waiting on some of the questions I've asked privately with the CFO to come back with some numbers on the overall budget and some of the budgetary ideas that I might bring forward.
So maybe on that, just put a pin in the attorney discussion, could we look at maybe some contract analysis? Mr. Gates, obviously, take the prosecutor's side, I think that we definitely need that, and then, you know, one of these other three, is that possible, or what that looks like?
Yeah, absolutely.
So then, I'm sorry, just wanted to add two more, two more things, and then that'll be done. So the communications side, I think that that's, we need that, like, we have two hundred thousand people, we do not a good job of communicating to our folks, and it's been some of the, one of the, one of the things that I think-
And we don't have a daily newspaper, there's so many other things where, I, I agree, that communications does need to be upped, just because I do believe it's important for our constituents to know what we do here at City Hall.
Because if we don't tell them, somebody else makes something up and tells them, and then we've got to spend ten times much energy trying to, trying to back it back out, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's absolutely important. With some of the increased costs that are kind of coming down the pike, Sunny, with regard to our insurance premiums, that was something I think that was starting to get, it's starting to get hairy, right? So we have all sorts of insurance going up, right? So it's our, what, what type of, what type of premiums are going up?
So the largest insurance premium that is going up is our excess liability insurance. So for this current year, our premium is two point five million. We are looking at some preliminary numbers for premiums, these typically are one of the last items to be provided before the budget is presented for adoption. So that range is anywhere from three million to three point four million, so potentially almost a nine hundred thousand dollar increase from current year.
And that has, still has a million dollar deductible effectively, right?
Yes.
And that covers up to how much, above the million dollars, how much does the excess liability?
You know what, I have to go back and look, I think-
And that covers litigation and trips and falls and claims against the city effectively?
It does, and there are certain things that are accepted from that policy, but those are things that, you know, again, would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis by our carrier.
Okay. And then, yeah, just looking at our, the kind of longer-term slide on fourteen again, like, this doesn't include what I think just got posted earlier today, which is the kind of costing for the POA contract that we're contemplating, that's on the city's website now. That will come back, that won't be part of the next budget, the meeting on, in, the first meeting in June, correct? Because it won't, we, it, we haven't approved it, nothing's come public, so we haven't approved anything, but-
Correct.
That will, when, when that does come forward, there'll be an updated-
There will be an updated-
...bunch of discussion as we vote on that?
Yes. So when that is brought forward for council approval and consideration, then we will also include the long-term financial impacts of that contract as well.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you. I had a lot of the same comments, so I won't repeat those. With regards to, I saw the Oakview Streetscape was on there for the one point two million dollars, and I just wanted to confirm that those were matching funds, is that correct for a grant?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Also, with regards to the HR analyst, I know we have had a lot of conversation, we just had a little bit more right now, but really being able to, I think it will pay for itself because this is a huge, an area of, of a big potential increase in costs, so that definitely makes a lot of sense. Likewise with, likewise with the city manager's office, the communications side of things, definitely that's one of our big priorities.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that. With regards to the city attorney's office, I did have a question, I know that both Councilmember McKeon had mentioned that kind of the deputy community prosecutor kind of goes without saying, and city attorney mentioned that as well, and I know, one thing that we've talked about in the past is that I believe we're supposed to have reporting about the community prosecutor area. My question really is, how frequently should that be coming to us? I don't recall really any coming to us, maybe to substantiate something like this.
Yeah, so you mean in terms of the, what the program is doing? So we come every year, and we, we were, I was planning to come in May, but we got bogged down, and so I'm hoping to come back in June. We were here last year as well.
I, for some reason, I remembered it being more frequent, but perhaps it's, it's annual?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess, let's see, the last thing to mention here, I just appreciated also, you know, really trying to proactively strengthen our reserve requirements. I think that will hopefully protect us or from getting into a bad spot in the future. And also with that, increasing, or looking at the rainy day reserve, combining that makes sense, also looking at the, since we do have some incoming funds, to be able to basically take twenty-five percent of that, was it?
Yes.
Okay, which makes sense, so we're not really deciding to put it towards maybe something that we need at that moment, that we're always really saving further for a rainy day.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. And also thank you for everybody for putting this together.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into preparation of the budget, and also, you know, definitely appreciate the work that the staff does for the city. So one thing that might be helpful in terms of the requests for more FTEs, and you can tell me, Sunny, if this has already been prepared as backup to the budget requests, but if the departments have any kind of analysis, so for example, if someone's sharing, like Jennifer did, that we're, we want to bring in-house, bring, bring stuff in-house that's being contracted right now, we see, we can see that dollar amount and see what's being, you know, saved, or, you know, kind of switch from one pocket to another, those kinds of things would be helpful to have, just as backup. If we need more, if we need a community prosecutor, you know, we've got X number of cases, you know, we could have, we could do more, X number more if we have another prosecutor, so, stuff like that. I think considering the headwinds that you talked about, Sunny, economically, I think there'll be increased attention on, well, I hope, on the budget from residents. They may be a little bit confused because, you know, it was just a few months ago that we were talking about a hiring freeze for staff. So I think it's important that we have the backup for these requests so that folks can see that, if they want to see it. So, and then with respect to the AES funds, just wanted to, I heard you say that those funds are reserved for capital projects in Southeast, just want to repeat that every time I talk to somebody, and I know you have the same experience, Councilmember McKeon, in Southeast about capital-related projects, they always ask, okay, so AES money is still there, that's still going to be devoted to Southeast because Southeast, those neighborhoods surround the plant, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Just, okay, yeah, okay, thank you, those, those are all my questions.
Thank you. And then on June sixth, so we will provide more detail on the eleven FTEs that we are requesting for consideration, so.
Hey, I'll just dovetail on that with Councilmember Bolton's comments, can you give me just on the multimedia officer, just more detail on what, what that position does, and then what we're currently contracting out for, that it's currently serving, doing those services, and then the, the cost difference by bringing that in-house?
Absolutely, we can do that.
Anything else, members? Okay.
Well, thank you so much for all the hard work, staff, really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I heard from my pro tem that now on the agenda, we're going back to a brief recess, going back into closed session, is that correct, members? Okay, let's go back to closed session.